Good morning. It's Tuesday, June 11th, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, we've got minutes.
I move to approve the Gene IV minutes.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussions or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, and now we're open to public comment regarding any pending resolutions. The resolutions were posted and then put out there. I know, Trina, you're here. Did you want to speak about the one resolution involving Montville CRA?
Sure.
This would be the time to do that.
All right.
Please, if you would, please. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I am here about the resolution regarding the CRA for the nursing home scheduled to go into Montville Township. And I'm coming in on behalf of Montville Township. I think one of the situations, and it might very well be rectified by tonight, quite frankly. One of the situations that we have here is that the county commissioners are representing the township trustees on entering into CRAs. In the 24 years that I've been involved with the county, the county commissioners have never gone against the township trustees of any of the 17 townships when they're acting on behalf of those trustees. And I think in this situation, we don't know if you're going to go against them or not, because the trustees have not yet talked to the developer about the project. This is a situation where it's in the JED area. The township requires that to be in a CRA, that they have to also be in the JED. There's a question, again, which seems to be able to be rectified after speaking with the attorney for the developer today, this morning, that they're still going to pursue going for the JED, but there's a question about being part of the JED. There's a question about whether or not this is an appropriate use of the CRA in the township. And again, it's something the township trustees should be able to ask questions and make a decision on. In the past three CRAs since 2015 that have gone into Montville Township, every single one of those developers have come and spoken to the trustees prior to the CRA being granted. So I realize that the issue before you, and because there is also a time crunch, is to approve the CRA. My request to you is that you approve it contingent on approval by the township trustees and the city of Medina. That's it.
Okay. We had a prolonged discussion. I know that the general public, and hopefully you've seen the video from last week.
I did not. I've been on vacation.
Oh, okay.
I'm supposed to be on vacation still, but I came back a little early.
We had an extensive discussion in the minutes of the meeting reflect, I think, very concisely and accurately, the discussion regarding that. As I understand it, the township trustees have had several public discussions about this.
There's been...
Let me finish.
You're right.
You've had several public discussions about this. The township trustees, we had representatives last week when we had a discussion. There was a township representative, fiscal officer, as well as township trustee several weeks ago when we met, as was the custom of the commissioners and township and all prior, all CRA engagements, where the township has input and opportunity. We know that as it was going through zoning approval and so forth, there was opportunities for the township to weigh in and the development of that project. So there was multiple opportunities for the township, the township trustees, to have input and voice their concerns regarding. And I understand that basically it comes down to one public service, the LST, and the, I'll just say, above-average use of those residents of that facility of LST services. And I know that that's of concern. We understand that's a legitimate concern, but we also recognize that there's been, I would say, numerous opportunities for the township to address that with the developer of the project.
May I respond?
Sure. Okay.
Just as the county commissioners have three members, the board of trustees do as well. When the county commissioners go to the various meetings around the county, each individual commissioner does not represent the entire board. The entire, they simply can bring back the information. They can bring back what their concerns are. They can express their concerns, but they're expressing it as one of three commissioners. And that is the same case as the trustees. We've had representatives at various meetings, but that's one individual. The entire board has not sat, just like this board is meeting today, has not sat down. As to the zoning issue, zoning is not the township trustees, it's an independent board. And a person can come in, start a business, go through zoning, and never try to get a CRA, never try to go for the JED, can even build in the JED district, and not go for having the tax abatements that the current developer is seeking. That would go through zoning without any input from the trustees. So I'm just simply asking that the developer meet with the trustees, answer their questions, and then move forward from that. And I think you said that you would be able to go to the meeting tonight. We also have another meeting in two weeks, if you can't make it tonight.
I guess the point was that the trustees were present, they were aware of the project. On May 28th of this year, you ended up, actually the trustees, as a board, passed a resolution requesting an increment in terms of the CRA, the tax abatement. You went from, you formalized the 50% for five years, 35% for additional five, and then 25% for the others. And I think mindful of, you had projects were coming to the CRA that this would apply to. So when the township was notified, you've had several meetings since the township was notified for the trustees to talk to the developer, to bring them forward, and actually be able to publicly address that. And I think it was stated by, I know you weren't at the meeting, but the preliminary meeting I was at, it was very clear that the township trustees, that the public officials of Montville Township were trying to use the CRA as leverage, as leverage to secure funds from the developer for those services. And that is, that was not the design of the CRA, that's not the intent of the county commissioners, what was created at the behest of Montville Township trustees. As far as, to my knowledge, every trustee that I've talked to said they liked this project. So they have not taken a public, I understand they've not taken a public stand, if they had the opportunity to, say that they are opposed to this project. So for, to characterize that we're going against the township trustees, I think is a mischaracterization of what is actually going on here. There's an attempt to single out one particular land use, one particular developer, to pay, to pay for a specific service that you feel that they are creating an undue burden upon.
I think you might be misstating or misunderstanding what the concern is. The concern regarding emergency runs, regarding the ambulance, is a concern as to what is the definition of a non-emergency versus emergency run. And I think that's a very good question to ask, because the developer has said that they're going to pay for their non-emergency runs, and yet they're still saying that there may be, what, five to 10 per week of emergency runs per week. Is that legitimately an emergency run? What is the definition of an emergency run? Is that the taxpayers of Montville Township subsidizing expected costs of a business? Or is that truly something that is an emergency that needs to be handled? It's a valid question to ask. It doesn't mean that the project isn't good. It doesn't mean that the project isn't wanted. It's simply a question that is, wants to be asked before we agree that this is appropriate for a CRA in JED. That's it.
I guess that was the discussion weeks ago, that was the discussion last week. And we've concluded that, we've concluded, being the authority for the CRA, that that is not an issue that we should be taking, it's not part of our conditions, it's not part of the requirements. They're meeting every requirement that county has put forward regarding the tax abatement. The township has had input on that, has had the opportunity to provide that. And I understand the concerns. As John Quinn, you were present at the JED meeting, as I was, you chaired it. Well, John Quinn has said, "This is a billing issue." And I understand it as a billing issue with regards to recouping the costs for those emergency runs. And to the individual that is actually using that service.
Again, the question is, what is an emergency run versus a non-emergency run? And that is not a billing question, that is a question for the developer.
But is that, is that relevant to our analysis of the tax abatement question? And that's...
It is relevant to the township's analysis of whether or not that this is an appropriate project to have a tax abatement of any kind. And we have an agreement with the city under our Amendment Number Two of our JED that requires specifically, no tax abatements, tax exemptions, tax incentives, or TIFs shall be granted on property within the JED district without the consent of both contracting parties. That hasn't happened.
You, well, number one, that is an agreement between you and the city of Medina, with township and the city of Medina. We are not a party to that. We are not subservient to the township, nor subservient to the city of Medina.
I agree.
It's an independent, and I think the prosecutor, when we were, and that's the last JED meeting, when I was there, and I mentioned this last week, the question came down to is, what is the linkage between the JED and between the CRA under the commissioners? And I, as I understood from the prosecutor last week, when we had, before we had the discussion, is, these are literally independent, other than we have included as part of our policies that the entity, in order to qualify for this CRA, has to apply for a JED. That's the requirement, and that goes right back to, as I pointed out, as we talked about in a very lengthy period, talking about the cost of services study done in 2001, a land use compatibility study back in 2004, part of the approach to growth management, trying to make sure that you have adequate public facilities to meet public development, meet development, and that in order to make sure that the services, the demand for services increase with growth, that there's a tax base to support those services. That would apply to LST, police, parks, roads, everything. And that, in that context, that was why, as I understood, the city of Medina and Montville decided to go ahead and create a JED, in addition to making sure that you didn't lose land to annexation, but at least that you cooperatively worked together, so in order to provide additional resources to the communities for those increased services. The cost of services study that was done in 2001 said very clearly, for Montville, because they had no industrial land, the only way they were going to be able to balance their cost of services for growth management, residences typically pay less in taxes than they demanded services. Businesses have to offset that, but not all businesses are equal. Commercial businesses have, some have greater demands on services, and some have less. And that study said if you had a big box, they have a, like Medina's township has, they use a lot more in services sometimes than they pay in taxes. So this is one of the reasons that Montville, as I understood it, and I'd been in commission at the time, the discussion started to create a JED, so that that income taxes that is generated can then go back to the township to be able to cover some of those additional costs for services. And that's why I'm supportive of it, like this, so long as you follow what our standards are, we follow the law, this will be a good project, and I think a good facility for our community.
And I have, I have some other thoughts that I'm going to save until we discuss the resolution, but, I mean, I'm sensitive to your point, and I appreciate that the trustees do have some, you know, challenging questions ahead related to this project. I just haven't seen any authority in our discussion with the prosecutor's office, learned of anything that puts us in a position to consider that in purpose, in the process of approving or rejecting the CRA. And so, and that's where the, kind of the greater good overall of the project, I'm confident, based on what I heard at last week's meeting, that some of these other hiccups will be able to be worked through with willing parties, so...
So if I could address both of your concerns, because it's the same concern. I agree with you that the commissioners are separate than the township and the city. Absolutely agree. However, the township and the city do have requirements with each other that there has to be approval for a CRA by each entity, that there has to be approval for any tax abatement. There has to be approval for them both, both have to approve for the JED to go forward. And then it comes right back down to the county commissioners represent the unincorporated territories within the county, including Montville Township. And in the past 24 years, the county commissioners have prided themselves on following along with what the townships want. And I'm just asking that in this instance, that if you're going to do an approval, approve it conditioned on the developer coming into the city and the township to answer their questions. I'm not expecting a hiccup, I'm not. But I do think the process needs to go forward where the township and the city both approve any kind of tax abatement, to abide by our agreements. And then the county, on the CRA, going forward, you represent the township on this.
I'll say, we represent the county, and the county tax base. The way the Ohio Vice Code stipulates is it is a county tax abatement program. We concur and work with the townships. We, I will point out, and I pointed this out last week, that our resolution, the resolution that the commissioners adopted years ago calls for this class of development, 50% for 15 years. The county commissioners have cooperated and worked with the township, say, "Look, that is too much, all right? We'll go ahead and go with the declining, the 50%, the 35, and the 25," with the schedule that they have preferred. We have worked historically with every township regarding that. At this point, to say that we're contingent, that our approval has to be contingent upon the township approval, that's not what the law says.
Again, this isn't a question about the law. I've already agreed...
It is a question about the law.
I've already agreed that the county acts independently. But I've also agreed, I've also stated, that since 2015, the county commissioners have not acted without approval from the trustees. And that in the past 24 years of working with the county, county commissioners don't go against the trustees. And when they are representing that interest...
The trustees did not have every opportunity to take formal action on this, several times. You did not.
I guess I don't understand what the harm is if we're not going against a timeline, that the timeline that the developer needs is still going to be met. What the harm is in allowing the city and the township to be able to have the opportunity to do their part of their JED agreement on agreeing that this is an appropriate use.
The JED had the opportunity to approve it two weeks ago when you had the meeting.
The JED is not the township.
You had, two members were voting there, and you have the general, those individuals that, but you unanimously supported to table it, you had the opportunity. The township trustees have met several times, had the opportunity. You have not. And as I said, public officials from the township have said they want to use the CRA to leverage, to leverage an agreement. And that was, that's not the intent of the commissioners, to utilize this mechanism. We do use the CRA to make sure that there's an agreement between, one of the heavily impacted taxing authorities is the school district. The school district, and even though the law allows us to go ahead and pass it without school involvement, we do listen to the schools, and they actually are included as part of this agreement.
And they were included, and they had a presentation to them.
Exactly right.
And they had the opportunity, as a school board, to make that decision, which the trustees have not had. The trustees haven't had that meeting. The developer has not approved, has approached the trustees on that.
My contention is you had, the township did have several opportunities to do this, they chose not to.
And the JED board did do a continuance, because they had questions that needed to be answered by the township trustees. The developer needs to go before the trustees and have a talk with them about it.
We had a quorum of trustees here last week at a public meeting.
But that would have been your meeting.
Still, their opportunity to give their opinion.
But it was your meeting, it was not theirs. They would have violated...
The township had several meetings, the trustees, obviously, you had the opportunity and you didn't act.
They would have violated the Open Meetings Act if they had acted here.
Oh, I agree. I didn't expect them to act, they certainly had ability to input, as the law permits and as our policy permits. But the question is, is you want to draw out a process so you could basically, hopefully, draw some cash or single out a specific developer.
Again, that is, you are mischaracterizing it, that is not true. You have said that now four times, and that is not a true statement. Emergency runs are emergency runs.
Agreed.
The question is, what is an emergency versus what is not?
Well, but, but really, that, even that, though, I think obfuscates the CRA process. And I think that is beyond the scope of what is appropriate for the commissioners to consider when we're, when we're considering a CRA.
It might be, but it's not inappropriate for the trustees to consider that. Which is why we have the rule within our JED that there are no tax abatements unless there's an agreement by both parties.
And I think the, I think the strongest argument that's come out of this is related to the application and the membership in the JED. And that's why I'm inclined, when we, I think when we consider the resolution itself, I think we've come up with a solution to, to kind of take extra steps to ensure that the JED application not is merely made, but also continues, because that was another important indication that I heard last week, was that the applicant intends to continue that process. Now, it will ultimately be the JED's separate public action to accept that application or not. But my concern was, well, if we, if we do this out of the order that this has been done in the past, do we give the applicant the ability to just withdraw that application? And I'm confident, based on both last week's discussion and also the language of our resolution, that we're going to consider it in a little bit, that that's not going to be the case. And with that, I think the analysis of what is appropriate for us to consider in the approval of a CRA has been addressed. And I think the JED, the JED action is, the language related to the JED application, I think, goes beyond what may be required, out of deference to the, to the other players involved, so...
At the JED meeting, I think you mentioned that the township has the ability to bill individuals for LST services, correct?
Not single out in an individual.
Pardon me?
It's not to single out a business.
Agreed, agreed. You have to be fair and equal and nondiscriminatory.
Correct.
So if you're going to bill one person, you have to bill everybody that fits that same classification.
Correct.
That if you have people beyond a certain level of service, they have to utilize it.
Correct.
But at this point, what does that have to do with the discussion of someone that's building a facility? If this was a senior citizens complex, could have almost even more. I think the data that was provided at that meeting and provided in our discussion shows that even a senior apartment facility has a higher-than-average demand on LST services. I mean, that's, part of the data was provided, because you don't have those, but Medina does. They do have an average, above-average demand.
Correct.
So any, so what does the conversation with the developer have to do with that circumstance? If we had, if this developer was coming in and saying, "We're going to do an apartment building, a senior apartment building," would you have the same argument?
So the developer that came in with a Starbucks came in to talk about how many jobs they were bringing in.
Right.
What they were coming in to provide for the township, what they were expecting from the township. This is no different.
Agreed, and we already have their payroll, and that's, of course, the JED talks about the amount of payroll generated, what the investment to the community, the number of injuries, as well as the services, as was pointed out. First and foremost, this is about providing housing opportunities to seniors with, so that they can deal with their medical needs. In fact, when we look at it, you have the statistic of people over 65. In that population, seven out of 10 during the span of their life are going to need a facility like this. And we've got a lot of seniors, and we know it's a growing population. So having a facility like this within a community, I think, is a great amenity. It's a great, it's a prize to have a facility like this for our residents.
That's a discussion that should happen before the trustees. I'm not disagreeing with you. But that's a discussion that needs to happen before the trustees, because of our JED agreement with the city. This is something, and our Second Amendment that says, there is no tax abatement approved by either entity unless that there, unless there is agreement by the parties. This is a discussion to have in front of the trustees. I'm not saying it's not a great program, project. I'm not saying, you know, I like Starbucks, too. I couldn't think that that was a bad project coming in either.
I think, I think the ultimate...
But they all came in.
The difference between what you're saying and how we view this, and we've, you know, talked to, I've spent time talking with counsel, I know others up here have as well, the big difference is your interpretation of that Second Amendment is that the CRA is the type of tax abatement that's covered by the Second Amendment, the Second Amendment to the JED document, between the city and the township. And that's what, that's kind of the missing link for me, is how the CRA process that the commissioners approve or submit, I guess, it ultimately is approved by the Department of Development, right? But how that process is even an extension of an act of the township or the city, I have not seen a connection to those things.
Our language is very clear, no tax abatement without agreement from the contracting parties. And the CRA development area that was approved is only over the JED area.
But, but, I mean, just basic contract principles, I could go into an agreement with my neighbor and say, "The city can't tax us on this land, because we're autonomous." And my neighbor and I would agree to that till our last dying breath. The city taxing authority is still going to have the authority to tax us. That doesn't make us autonomous from that. So I think we've got to look at the source of the authority and how it applies. I don't think an agreement between the city and the township is sufficient to condition the county's authority to approve these things.
We're simply asking that if you grant it, that you grant it conditioned on approval from both the city and the township. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else regarding pending resolutions? Yes, you, go ahead, yeah.
Good morning. Dave Mitchell, on behalf of the applicant LTC Montville. Just a couple comments, maybe I could smooth, help smooth some of this over. We agreed at the last meeting that we would continue to pursue the JED petition with the understanding that we had a little bit of a chicken-and-the-egg problem, you not wanting to approve this without us being in the JED, JED not wanting, us not wanting to enter the JED without knowing there was CRA approvals, approvals. So to be very crystal clear, we will continue to pursue our JED application regardless, well, independent of what you do here, with the one caveat that we will not accept a condition on that admission that singles us out for any additional charges, costs, whatever, that aren't applicable to the other members of the JED. So if that's the township's intention, and I don't know that it is, but if it is, we will withdraw our petition to the JED. We are happy, and have always been happy, to meet at any time with the township trustees. Nobody has ever invited us to a meeting, asked us to attend a meeting. We've had, this project has been pending since 2020, and that request has never been made. We were requested to join the JED. Ms. Palowski reached out to us to join the JED. And so we've been responding to those invitations, and the CRA was offered to us as part of the JED process. So if you want to talk to us, we're here, give me a call. I'm happy to attend tonight's meeting, if that gives you any comfort. But, you know, I happen to agree with, with the president's comments that I don't, I don't see a conditional request being appropriate in this circumstance.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on the public comment? All right, go ahead, move forward, county engineer, I think Andy's here.
Gave Dan the day off, so you're stuck with me.
That's fine.
I have three resolutions. We have, there's three, I'm going to pull one for the excess equipment. We had the wrong piece of equipment listed there. So the first one would be the necessity clause Smith Road for roadside construction. The second one would be authorizing the county engineer to purchase one new model crack sealer. And the fourth would be to amend a contract for the purpose of the floodplain modeling review services for the ODNR Killbuck Creek Aquatic Barrier Project.
I will move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moving second, any comments? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
And weekly permits are there for you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right. Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to request qualifications for design services, to design and provide construction and management services for the Plum Creek Sanitary Pump Station Rehab, rehabilitation project. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to invest... The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to invest the retainer of Fetcho Excavating Incorporated for the Fenn and Marks Road Water Main Replacement Project in an escrow account.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Planning Services, Denise Testa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for your consideration. It's rescinding the submission of an application for funding for CDBG for program year 2024 and reauthorizing the submission of the CDBG application with the correct funding amounts.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving second, do you want to explain why we had to?
Absolutely. So in our effort to fully fund the low-di sidewalk, we included the engineering and architectural expenses, and CDBG does not allow that, so we overfunded them in our zest to spend all of our money.
Okay.
The beneficiary was Brunswick then?
City of Brunswick.
Correct. So we put it in the city of Brunswick, and that seemed to work well.
Basically, we're limited to three projects.
Three projects, correct.
Got it.
So the full funding on the others is unchanged. Brunswick's went up to offset the.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Got it. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Brandon Gibson, Economic Development Corporation, the main event. Sorry.
Good morning, commissioners. Just one resolution today, approving the community reinvestment area agreement and community reinvestment compensation agreement for LTC Montville LLC.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just, and I alluded to having some additional comments when we considered this. So the version of the resolution that's in our packets is a little bit different than the one that was circulated by the MCDC. Not significant changes, but I think meaningful based on the discussion we've had. And the change is to reflect that it had already said that LTC Montville has made application for membership in the city of Medina Montville Township Joint Economic Development District. And we added, "and has indicated that they intend to pursue such application after the approval of this resolution." And in the actual resolution language, approving the CRA, it goes on to say, "Provided that LTC Montville LLC does not withdraw its application for membership in the city of Medina Montville Township Joint Economic Development District." And so while I appreciate Attorney Devaney's comments and perspective on this, I believe that to be the limit of what we can appropriately do to kind of condition our approval on this. And I think to, even in spite of the Second Amendment language in the JED agreement, I think to have additional conditions that go beyond that, related to townships or cities subsequent or corresponding approval, I think is, I just haven't seen any direction or legal authority that that's appropriate for us to do. But I do think that the point they've raised about the concern, and it was raised last week, too, that upon obtaining the CRA, that the application would be withdrawn, I think that's a relevant concern to our approval. And this revised language kind of is an acknowledgement that this is a little different order than how this has been done historically. And so I think it addresses that appropriately, again, within the confines of kind of the latitude that we have in approving these. So that's the change that's in there. I just wanted to make mention of that.
Yeah. And I don't foresee a problem, not at all. And I think Mr. Mitchell has said two times in two public meetings that are recorded that he doesn't either, and I tend to take him at his word. He's operating in good faith as long as we've known him, so.
Yeah. And I already made some of the other comments I kind of prepared for during our initial discussion. I think it is relevant to point out that the township, whenever the township was going through and creating the overall plan through the cost of services and creating the JED and helping for the county to define the CRA and setting the conditions of that, that this type of facility was a conditional. And I know that there's disagreement as to what the purpose of holding this up that has seemed to be occurring, when public officials at meetings have said, "We want to leverage this," that's what they've said, and that's what I've heard them say. So you can challenge that or not, but it appears that if we were to hold this up, this is about making sure we don't stop this project from proceeding. He cannot move forward and put in footers until he has a CRA agreement in place. And he needs to move forward, otherwise he wouldn't be able to be qualified for it. There is ample opportunity in the past for the township to take the necessary actions. And by withholding, withholding, well, not their lack of inviting them over a two-year period or one year or last several months, withholding that and stalling the process is a way to create pressure, to reach some kind of a separate disparate, and I think discriminatory, practice, I think is just inappropriate. I will point out it was conditional, and I will, some of the standards that were set with the zoning, in 2004, whenever they created that conditional zoning, one of the standards is the establishment of the conditional use should not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community by creating excess additional requirements at public cost for public facilities such as police, fire, and schools. When they went to permissive use, they eliminated the ability to talk about conditions about any facility within that. And I think it was out of fairness. It was because you can't discriminate against congregate facilities, people with disabilities, frankly, that was just good common sense. I know there's opportunities to talk about that. We use, if you will, whenever we, it has to do with adequate public facilities, Jeremy, our sanitary sewer and water, if we get an unusual high demand from a place, it's fair and equal use, but if somebody comes in and we don't have the capacity, we can force them. We can say, "Look, yes, you have access to it, but you have to make these improvements." And that's what it's about, is when it comes to community services. If there's an inordinate demand, okay, you work out the conditions of that. The question, when it comes down to the tax base, yes, likely the residents of that facility are going to use LST services probably more than the average household. But likewise, they're going to use the roads a whole lot less. There's a road use levy, there's actually two. There's the one of fixed levy, and then there's another inside millage for road use. Likely not going to use the parks as often, yet they're paying for parks, probably might use the police as often. What it comes down to is there's a tax bill, it covers all the services, and that's why you have general funds, and that's why also there's a JED in place to provide tax revenues, to help provide the community services, so that everybody has a fair and equal opportunity for the use of public services. And I would agree with Aaron 100%. I don't see any reason to make this conditional, other than what we have had by practice. I just think, yes, it is out of the normal rotation, but I think it's necessary in order to make the project move, allow it to move forward and to progress and be an asset not only to the Medina general area, but also Medina County. So I just think it's a necessary, it's obvious, it has a benefit. Nobody, the township trustees could have said, "We have these issues, we don't want to see it move forward." They never expressed that by resolution. And at this point, without, given that kind of lack of clarity or intent of their board, then I think, yes, we have the authority to move independently and accept this.
I concur.
Okay.
I also have some extra copies of the revised language. If anybody downloaded the packet and needs a copy of it, there's some extras up here. Those were, those extras, right? Yeah, thank you for printing those.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm just going to give you a couple if you need to circulate. There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes resolution today, there's two new hires, one in sanitary and one at County Home, three rate increases, one at Solid Waste District, two in sanitary, one promotion in sanitary, one return from FMLA at Job and Family Services, two suspensions, one in maintenance and one in transit, and one resignation at the County Home.
You have a second? You have a second one?
Oh, I didn't grab.
The table of organization at Medina County Home.
Yep. Sorry.
That's all right. All right. So we got those two.
I will move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director. Good morning, Brett.
Good morning, commissioners. I have nine resolutions for you here today. Our first resolution is cash transfer for the Crippled Children's Health Fund for the billing services for January through June. Our second resolution is cash transfers for 4D reimbursement. Our third resolution is our print shop revenue for the month. Our fourth resolution is our gasoline rotary fund transfer. Our fifth resolution is amendment of the DART grant for the Drug Abuse Response Team. Sixth resolution is an agreement for service coordination between Family First Council and the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. Our seventh resolution is authorizing the purchase of gasoline, 7,000 gallons, for the Engineering Center. As usual, Port's petroleum has again come in as our lowest bid at $2.23.9 per gallon. Our eighth resolution is expenses of county officials. We have nobody that's going out of state this time. And our ninth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $2,110,850.48.
Move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Thank you, commissioners.
Very good. Thank you. Chris Jacob, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Presenting five resolutions this morning. The first authorizes the county administrator to act on behalf of the board for purposes of accepting the proceeds of an estate for the benefit of the Medina County Dog Shelter. The amount of the estate proceeds for the dog shelter is $12,300.
That's great. Oh, very nice.
Next resolution approves an agreement by and between the Medina County Office for Older Adults and Echelon Senior Living Group for the placement of adult protective services. This is an agreement that would commence May 1st retroactively of 2024 and expire on 12/31/2025. Next resolution authorizes liability coverage for the Medina County Land Reutilization Corporation through the County Risk Sharing Authority. This would provide liability coverage for the board members for the period, again, commencing retroactively to May 1st, 2024. Fourth resolution authorizes an amendment to an architectural and engineering services agreement for the Medina County Veteran Services Building Addition and Renovation Project. This is a slight increase in the fee of compensation for Envelope Consulting Services. The additional amount is $4,500 and is being requested due to the increased scope of work, mostly associated with the additional site work and engineering services required. And the fifth and final resolution this morning accepts the proposal from Envelope Consulting Services for criteria architectural services for the proposed Medina County Sheriff Vehicle Storage and Training Facility. As you know, the sheriff is proposing the construction of a building out in the location of the shooting range off of Wedgewood Road. This would, the building would be used for vehicle storage and would also include a meeting room for the users of the shooting range and others. The amount of the services for the architect are at $7,800.
Move to approve five resolutions.
Second.
I'll just say, $7,800 for the architectural design services?
Those are only for, this is a design-build project, so it's only for the preparation and evaluation of design-build proposals that we would get as a result of this process.
Okay. All right. Like I said, that was a bargain price.
Yeah. The actual design work would be included.
As part of the project.
Contractor's submission.
Got it.
As part of the overall scope of the project work.
So good. More like, well, an engineered design building.
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay. Got that. And then I just want to also, for the first resolution, I guess I'm allowed, since it's a public document, to indicate that, I guess, was James Lee Fisher?
Yes.
Was the person that would, the benevolent gift to the dog shelter. Just want to thank him for his, obviously posthumously, for his donation and his estate, and just really appreciate providing that additional resources to our dog shelter.
Do we have a plan for those funds?
No current plan. I did include at the bottom of the resolution wording that would allow it to be used for shelter operations and improvements.
Because if we could apply it towards the preliminary work that we need to do for a potential future home for the dog shelter?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be a great use of that.
We can certainly segregate that out.
Legacy-type gift for a legacy-type expense makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
Yeah.
We can do that, if you wish.
All right. But just want to thank publicly.
Yes.
His family. All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Commissioners's resolution, we do have one. Amending the appointment of county commissioners to various committees areas of responsibility, just an amendment, because I know we recently made some changes with the One Ohio, as well as, I think, clarification of some of the other assignments of the commissioners to the various departments. Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, were there other changes other than?
Well, it just made sense, Steve's solid waste.
Oh, that's right.
To have a solid waste director.
Yep. Thank you. At that point, yeah, she was supporting the Colleen on the Solid Waste Policy Committee, so we were just, help facilitate, which was, it was fine, either way, but at this point, kind of help consolidate that.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Public comment? We'll deal with, okay, during discussions, that's all right.
It hasn't hung in there this long.
Yeah, that's all right. Okay. All right. Actually, we'll now move into the public discussion, which is actually, so Jeremy, we did, do you want to come forward? We'll start the discussion regarding the septic.
Yeah, last week, it was last week, we passed a resolution to increase the septic disposal rates at our Liverpool wastewater treatment plant. That resolution, basically, there's two charges currently, one for in-county septic, one for out-of-county septic. We got rid of the in and out of county, just to go to one singular rate effective July 1st, and then we would move that, those rates to 10 cents per gallon. And then, beginning January 1, that rate was going to get moved to 15 cents per gallon. And that was to basically just cover our cost for the treatment of that, of the septic. We sent a notification out to all of our registered septic haulers, notifying them of the increase. Spoke with Mr. Supak here, I think it was on Friday, and a little bit yesterday morning, and then we reached out and we were going to kind of discuss implementation of these rates.
Yeah. Did you want to address this, or you just want to?
Understood.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. And I've had some phone calls, conversations with some of the haulers, some from, actually outside the county. And I would agree with, like, 15-day notice is kind of, given that, I understand with the nature of contracts and so forth, it's difficult to make that kind of adjustment. And I understand that with a lot of the contracts you have, I guess, on an annual basis, some do monthly, the typical homeowner gets, what, their septic system twice every other year or something like that? And so that this might impact that cost. I know that, I had Jeremy do an analysis, what the true cost is for the treatment of the suspended solids and so forth, how much that really means in terms of revenues. I think when we went over the numbers, basically, we are not required to take septic. I was under oppression, or at one time maybe we were, because of our grant sources, but that was part of our overall discussion, because there are entities that have actually no longer accepting septic, like, was it according to French Creek, and then, of course, Barberton, no longer accepting over a period of time. They've decided they're not required to. There are other entities that do have different scales and different costs, and our proposed, puts us more above some of the cheaper ones. But we also wanted, we know that there's a public benefit likewise for that. But we know the overall cost is about $600 to $630,000 a year.
About 600, in 2023, it was about $600,000. About 600, in 2023, it was about $635,000 for the cost of treating the septic based on the suspended solids.
Right, so actually, it would be a savings if we didn't take it, but I think there's, we, so the underlying premise was, we have to capture the cost. Because what we don't, for our cost of services, our users pay for it. And so if we don't get it over here, we have to get it over here, with all the other users. So it has to be at least on an at-cost basis for that. Historically, the county has not made adjustments to that, in which case we're kind of catching up. The question is, how do we phase in the catch-up? I'm convinced that actually by the first of the year, we need to be catching up. We need to actually capture that cost. The question is, is phasing it in. And I would agree that based on conversation, I think we phased it in too quickly. Maybe we ought to start and split the difference in September, October, saying, okay, this is what the new cost is going to be, that nickel, and then co it up to the full 15 for the remainder, at least the first of the year. Not sure.
That makes sense to me. I mean, I agree with pretty much everything you said there, that we don't want that to be, nobody's trying to create a profit center, but we also don't want to have that be done at a loss, that's, you know.
October 1st start of a quarter would be good.
Yeah.
That seems like a reasonable.
To put it up to a nickel. That way, we're, actually, it's reducing our loss. We'll still be operating, if you will, this year subsidizing it, but by next year, we'll have caught up and basically capture the cost of actually doing those solids.
Do you have any sense of what that, obviously, if we're taking a nickel for the fourth quarter, then our loss in '24 would be less than it was in '23, you think?
Marginally. I mean, it really all depends on the amount of septic being brought to the plant. And yeah, I mean, if moving to October 1st, we would go to the singular rate beginning October 1st at 10 cents a gallon.
Correct.
And then January 1, we would move to 15 cents.
And actually, that number doesn't even take into consideration the cost for the staff. At this point, we've had this two-tiered system where the staff have to go and check as to whether it's inside the county or outside the county. And there's actually, there'll be less of that.
Yeah.
Since it's one cost.
Right now, like, every, there was, what, 18 or 1,846 trucks that came to the facility in 2023. Staff has to verify where every parcel or every address to determine if it's in county or out of county and then bill based accordingly.
Right.
So that would eliminate that.
We no longer have to do that.
Right.
And with that one cost. But there are still other areas. Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District southerly will still, as I understand, be at 8 cents a gallon. As well as, was the other one, was Akron?
Akron was a cheap one. I don't.
4 cents, okay. And I think there's even some others that'll be lower.
And I'm, I mean, we had a brief discussion about this as well. I'm okay with us not being the low-cost provider because with the way, I didn't realize, to your point, that there are counties or places, locations that don't accept it at all. And so it seems like we've kind of become a higher volume by not keeping our eye on the.
Well, Lodi was at 5 cents, and now they're up to 30 cents. So I think obviously they don't want to say, we're not going to take it, but they're going to charge.
Right.
An inordinate amount.
And I'm okay with having a charge that covers our costs and is still not making us.
Move to October 1st is us being sensitive to the private sector to adjust their own billing.
Right.
And to their customers, too.
Yeah, so, all right. You saw your agreement, we'll go ahead.
Yes.
I could communicate that to all the haulers then.
We'll get a letter back out to everyone. Yep.
We need to revise, we'll need to revise our resolution.
And I'll do an amendment to the previous resolution to adjust the dates.
Got it.
For next week.
All right, good, good. And I still, what a countenance, as I did, I think, when we talked about this, this is about a water quality issue. This is about whenever this, years ago, whenever we were expanding Liverpool, whenever all these improvements were being made, that we would accept septic because it provides a benefit to the watershed. We have an inordinate amount of septic systems, home septic systems that fail. And the idea of keeping them from failing is make sure that they're regularly pumped out. And we didn't want to make it such a high cost that people are not doing that, that they're waiting too long to get them pumped out. So the whole idea was accepting is making sure that, because we'll just say, water quality and watersheds respect no county boundaries. Rocky River doesn't stop flowing or doesn't go one way. We just have to be respectful of when it comes to the flow of water, that it comes down to is it benefits everybody to make sure that we make it at least as easy as possible, at least capture the cost, of course. But we do make it easy enough that the individuals can have systems for home sewage that comply with the standards and are not failing. And I think this is just one component of that. Yes, there's a cost to it, but I think ultimately, we just have to make sure we work within the system. We don't want to get to the point, I never, I won't support, I will not support eliminating this as a service. I think it's very necessary. We have the capacity to do it. And frankly, whatever our costs are, we transfer it there. It is a public service.
Yep.
For water quality.
Agreed.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Was it because I said you had to go to the microphone? Is that why you didn't add in here? Thank you for being here, though.
Yeah, thank you. Just acknowledge, yeah. Chris, you have something? Okay. Sure, not at all.
Just wanted to update you on a few matters, if I might, for a minute or two. We have a construction meeting at the emergency management project site this afternoon. I just wanted to let you know that we're nearing completion.
How's it look?
It's okay. We're still waiting for overhead doors. I believe they've been delivered. I'm not sure. I'll find out when I get there at 2 o'clock. That's one of the final things, as is paving and some final cleanup and site work.
Okay.
I believe we're going to get in pay application from the contractor today, which will allow us then to meet the $800,000 expenditure threshold. And we will, I'll work with Ben to get that reimbursement request sent there shortly after receiving the pay application. I think we should get that out probably by the end of the week or beginning of next week, meet the June 30th deadline, so. County Home Window Systems, we had had Greg in here several weeks ago during his, during the block grant application review. He had asked for approximately $125,000 to replace about 180, 85 windows at the facility. The suggestion was made that we could possibly utilize some ARPA dollars that we had remaining for that purpose. I had, believe I had communicated with you by email last week that we had legal counsel take a look and agree that we could use the traditional allocation balance for that purpose. So I wanted to provide you with an update on the ARPA funding. The first sheet is the traditional. We had $376,000 remaining in that allocation. So with your permission, we could use 125,000 of that approximately for this particular project. We'll have to go out to bid for it, obviously, and Matt and I can work with Greg to try to prepare the bid specs and get that done this year yet, if there's approval from the Board.
Yes.
Yes.
I guess agree.
I'm going to agree. I think it's a good use of those dollars.
Yes.
And those were dollars that we had allocated previously that came back, right?
There was a underspent amount in the fiber project because of the participation of other townships in that funding. So we can reallocate that remaining balance for other projects.
Perfect.
The second page of that handout is the revenue replacement side. You'll note that there's a balance remaining in there of about 497,000. So we'll have to have some further discussions about the use of both of those remaining balance amounts, so.
Yeah, I just want to thank the townships and communities that helped provide some of that additional funding for the fiber project out in the LMRA territory that provided the money for this and allowed us to be able to then be able to do a project in the county home.
Yep.
So this is kind of worked out, so.
I'm sure Greg will be in.
Yes, yes. Next, I wanted to mention that I had sent you correspondence yesterday on a lease amendment for the 1969 Courthouse Building between the county and the city. We have prepared now the first invoice for, associated with that lease. It would be for the quarter beginning July 1st. The amendment would reference that July 1st date. And also defer invoicing of the security component until such time as they occupy the building. And the sheriff is required at that point most likely to bring on additional security officers for the additional traffic coming through the front entryway. And also references.
The main, you mean the main courthouse entrance?
Entrance, right.
There's only one courthouse.
The checkpoint entrance, right. It does also.
That still doesn't feel like the front of the building to me. I know it's the entrance, but, yeah.
This is the draft of the agreement amendment.
I think the changes are very sensible.
My question is the boilers. We're taking over responsibility for the boilers?
They are most likely going to replace the boilers that are existing in the building.
Okay.
Stephen from our maintenance department wishes to not throw those out and possibly reutilize that for another purpose in the county because there's still life remaining with those boilers. Right.
Oh, okay.
So.
Let's go conservative.
That's frugality. That's, yeah, I appreciate that very much.
Boilers elsewhere.
Yes, I'm not sure where.
But they have to stay there because we don't have a place to park them in the meantime, right?
I believe he's trying to figure out where we'll place those in the interim period, so. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think the city's going to end up most likely replacing those existing boilers. And there's a provision in that agreement that would allow the county to obtain the ownership of those back for our purposes. And then it also references the staff entrance, which had been a discussion topic. Having a municipal court separate staffing entrance maybe didn't make a lot of sense because there's going to be additional operational costs associated with manning, security manning that in addition to manning our employee entrance. So it references their current thinking that it will not be a separate employee entrance, but if determined in the future, we would sit back down and negotiate that, so. They would be responsible for any of those costs.
I was going to say we would negotiate that, but that would be more from a courthouse security standpoint than negotiations. The cost would be theirs if they had their separate entrance.
Yes, yes.
Because that, that was.
I think it would have to be approved by the Supreme Court and all their rules and really like that, too.
I think that's part of the reason. I think also the construction costs and the security costs were all the reasons why they've decided to use the existing.
Yeah.
And I think that's a smart decision, and I think it's, you know, again, they're trying to watch their spend, too.
Right, and our staff entrance is immediately, is pretty close to the parking deck in terms of distance to travel for the employees. So it made sense to utilize that for their purposes, too.
And our employees, other than the hours where that is manned, are using the main entrance as well.
Yeah, there are certain restricted hours for using the staff entry point. Otherwise, if they are late getting to work for whatever reason, they're going to go through the main public entry.
The employee entrance is still like with the FOB, so forth, that identifies electronically in the vehicles and enters?
There's security officers manning the employee entrance.
Manning an employee entrance?
So they're going through security just through a different.
Got it, yes, I got it.
Okay.
With the wand.
With the wand.
Yeah, that seems equitable.
Okay, but please review it. I've sent it to the prosecutor's office also, since Mike assisted with the original document, and I just briefly chatted to him while he was here this morning, so.
Okay.
So assuming we'll move forward with it, whether that's next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, if that's okay with you.
I think it's great. I appreciate, I think it's a fair concession on our part on the security costs, and I'm glad that we're getting the rent commencing, too.
Okay, two more items.
Okay, sure.
Board of Elections, as you know, at budget time this year, when you adopted the annual budget, we only allowed for partial funding for certain line items because we wanted to see what the actual costs were as a result of the March, was it March, election? So we now have an idea of what those costs are, so we're going to try to schedule a meeting to sit back down with Board of Elections Director and Assistant Director and talk about remaining needs for the rest of the year. As you know, they had asked for, in, I think there are five line items, and the combination that they had requested, the funding combination was about $806,000. We had granted $419,000, and the expenditure through the primary is only $211,000.
Excellent.
So there may not be quite the need that we had thought perhaps there would be to supplement that budget. So we hope to have that meeting in the next several weeks and report back to you on that.
And no August election?
Right.
So just wanted to share that news with you. And finally, Administration Parking Lot, we're going to advertise the bid availability on this Friday, the 14th, and with a proposed bid opening date of July 2nd.
Great.
So just so you're aware. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Chris.
You bet.
Matt, anything? Brandon, anything else, or? Denise, did you have something for discussion?
Yeah, Denise is going to lead our Fair discussion.
Come on up, Denise.
Come on up.
At long last, we're talking about that.
At long last, yeah. So, you know, we had several meetings with members of the Fair Board regarding, you know, ideas for the future and plans for the future, and we've pivoted several times, and they had done their own study in a different kind of way. It wasn't just about facilities, and they came up with some goals for the future. So Denise, through all our conversations, took the information that they gave us, and she came up with three potential A, B, and C of going out for an RFQ and saying what companies that we could get to give them a vision of the future, give them ideas for the future, not imposing on them these ideas or these plans, but have a professional look at the 84 acres and show what's possible, you know, for potential better parking, for, you know, any of their needs that, that could be improved right now. So I'm going to have Denise talk about the options, and then I'm going to tell you my opinion on which one I think is best.
Okay, sure. Well, thank you. So Option A, the planning guy, this was the request that the Fair had requested in terms of their scope of looking at the 26-acre northeastern portion of the fairgrounds, followed by a reimagined plan of that 26-acre area. For Option B, the short-term plan, so I expanded that 26 acres to 37 acres and followed by a conceptual plan of the remaining fairgrounds acreage. So that is a little bit more of an expansive plan of Option A. Option C, I believe, is a hybrid, so it includes the entire fairgrounds, analyzing the land use conditions, and followed by a visionary conceptual plan including consensus among the Board of County Commissioners as well as the Future Fair Committee Board as well, as well as community stakeholders. So it's a little bit, it's a lot more actually of a depth and breadth plan that will hopefully give them ideas not only for the foreseeable future, but for the long-term future of how they can utilize the fairgrounds.
Okay, so even, even though one of their requests was a reimagining of the eastern section, which is largely Option A, I think if we're going to spend money on a potential plan, and we don't know if we will yet, I mean, we have to see what the RFQs look like when they get back. I think A and B are so limiting that I would be, actually be surprised if we got any really good or really big fair companies to actually turn in an RFQ. And Option C gives them the eastern side plus more. And again, if we would pick Option C, I still want it, you know, presented to the Fair Board to see if they even wanted us to go out for what's possible with the 84 acres. But if we're going to do it and expend, you know, any of the revenue replacement dollars on an RFQ to give them a visionary plan for the future with the understanding that this is not the plan that they have to do, but to show them what's possible on the 84 acres, I believe Option C is the only one really of value to the taxpayers as far as expending money on a strategic plan of this. as expending money on a, on a strategic plan of this nature.
Well, I, I see where you're coming from. In my mind, if we're only looking at, if we're, if we're carving out a specific portion of the acreage, it, it, it really isn't, and that, you didn't use the word strategic plan in there, I think that's because it, it is, it's more just a plan for this area that they wanna redevelop or change or modify. I guess my question is, I mean, if it were, if it were purely my input, my decision, I'd say option C all the way, for the reasons you, you mentioned. Is this, I mean, there's been other things we've put in front of them that they were a little bit hesitant to move forward on. Is, is this option C, how does that look relative to things that they've, they've kind of passed on?
One of the biggest thing of the past was there was always the option, a part of the strategic plan, acreage elsewhere in the county to look at.
Right, okay.
That's pretty much, that's eliminated in option C, because they, they, at this point, do not have an interest in considering that. So, this is more about the existing site and, and what's possible for them. Not what's better, because they may not agree with the company, but what is possible.
But it doesn't, but it, the only thing that I noticed in, in looking at that, and like I said, that's the, I'm inclined to, to go that path, too. It, it didn't carve out specific things for that twenty-six acres. Are you thinking that'd be a subpart of it, that, that it would look at the, that northeastern acreage?
Well, not necessarily, because that, that twenty-six acre parcel is, you know, essentially could be a parking lot.
Yeah.
And, and I know, and I believe there, there maybe have been some discussions about turning it into a parking lot, which is a simple kind of short-term solution.
Right.
So, you know, I think that if, if they're wanting to look at that twenty-six acre, acre parcel, they have an opportunity to do that independent of a strategic plan.
Gotcha. So, what, what we'd be paying for would be the, a true strategic plan, and then, if they, if they wanted to do something and say, well, if we're not gonna move forward with the big vision, what can we do just on the twenty-six acres? That's something they could kind of take charge of.
And, and actually, I envision, you know, should we go for this, and should they want us to go for this, that they would have input with this proposed company, where, you know, they would get, you know, interviewed, you know, maybe create a committee to deal with the company and give their ideas and what they think is best. But again, I'm thinking the timing on this, we may adjust a little bit, in my opinion. I, you know, I don't know if the fair board's even gonna want me kind of on their July agenda, I mean, they're preparing for the fair. I actually would like to let them get their fair done, this is like their busiest time of the year, and then, you know, ask them if they want me on their September or October agenda to discuss if we are for going for option C, to see if they want us to. And then, I envision RFQs, you know, in the winter, and then, maybe hiring a company for January, because I don't think it's good quality information if they don't actually see the fair going. So, I'd like to have a company say, you know, contract them, you know, to let them have six months to do a potential plan for us, you know, with the caveat that, you know, maybe they spend, you know, two or three days on-site at the fair in twenty twenty-five. I think we've missed the window for twenty twenty-four, and I think the, uh, fair board, you know, obviously, they're going to be busy the rest of the summer putting on the fair.
I, I agree with you both. If we're gonna spend public dollars, which we're elected to do, we better make sure that it's well-spent, not limited, and ought to include the entire property. And secondly, needs to involve the public. And I think that, that option C does talk about community stakeholders. We need to make sure it's just not the fair board, not just the commissioners, but that it's all, everybody that has a stake in this, and it has to be wider, and it ought to include the all, all eighty-four acres in that, and it can go through the process and come up, but obviously, implementation, whatever plan comes up, well, would be the fair board and the commissioners in partnership, just as over the years, I talked like the old guy's been around, but, you know, right now, that, when I first became commissioners, there was a number of parcels they didn't have. Over the years, they've gained additional property. And I think, given that opportunity, they ought to be looking long-term. If that's the place they wanna be, what will it look like? What will the fair of the future look like? And here's the opportunity to look at other counties, what are in place, and what's possible with that full eighty-four acres. That would meet the needs of our farming community, those that are using and those that are attending the fair. And if we're gonna spend public dollars, let's make sure it's worth the effort.
And do you, do you agree pushing back the timeline?
Agreed, agreed, yeah, definitely, sure.
So that, you know, they have their summer, because I, I, it's too, I, it's too late now to get a, a company for this year.
The only, the only other thought that I have is knowing, you know, that, I know there were some limitations to the kind of, there, we perceived some limitations to the preliminary work that they had done, but will there be an opportunity to include those things in this plan, or, because I don't, I don't wanna step on their toes and say we're scrapping.
One hundred percent. And that, that's where I think whatever company would be hired in the future, that will be their time when they're interviewed, to show the company their interest, to show the company their goals and desires, and, and give their input. That would be the time.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think, notice there's, the Senate released their, basically, their capital bill and the, the projects, and the number of fairs.
I know.
Millions of dollars, and we kinda missed that window?
I know.
So, this, your proposal would then align with the next two years, in two years, another opportunity to go to this state, to get additional funding, to help fund whatever facilities they envision.
How great would it?
I think it's a good.
How great would it be if, if there was a plan, and, and maybe it encompassed some buildings?
Yes.
To have a proposal ready for twenty-sixth?
That'd be great.
For the, the capital budget ask. It would be wonderful.
Agreed.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
All right. Anything else, Colleen?
Uh, not, not at this moment, no.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I don't either. Do we have a request for executive session?
I would move that we enter executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Sambly?
Yes. All right.